Good evening, everyone. Tuxbury Zoning Board of Appeals for November 21st, 2019 is in session. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from October 24th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 24th, 2019.
Motion's been made.
A second.
And second, and all in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. First item on the agenda. JP B R E Ventures LLC for modification of an existing variance, which was recorded at Book 315, page 195, and Book 3278, page 328, to allow two separate, single-family dwellings on one lot, where three dwellings now exist, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 155 Pleasant Street, assesses map 47, Lot 39, zoned residential. Anyone here for this matter? Okay. We have a letter in our packet. The applicant is requesting to be continued to December 19th. If somebody would like to make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the JP B R E Ventures LLC for the modification of existing variances to next month, 2019.
A second.
Motion's been made, and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Just a side note on that one, because this has been continued a couple of times. If you look through the packet, because I don't like just letting them go and go and go. If you look in the packet, they're working with the building commissioner.
Yeah.
So they're just going back and forth, that's why they haven't.
Yeah, I saw that.
All right, first item on the agenda, new hearings. Mary E. Cosgrove for a variance from Section 4143 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to install a... Sorry, it's kind of a typo there. Let me start that again. Mary E. Cosgrove for a variance under Section 4143 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to install a 15 by 30 in-ground pool, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 16 Starbird Avenue, assesses map 58, Lot 180, zoned residential. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, and speak clearly into those mics so we can hear you.
Okay. Mary E. Cosgrove, 16 Starbird Ave., Tuxbury, Mass.
Stephen P. Cosgrove.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead. Same address?
16 Starbird Ave., Tuxbury.
Thank you, sir. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
We just want to put a small in-ground pool in our backyard. And the lot, where it's going, we don't... It's a small lot, it's really a funny shape. And we just moved here about a year and a half ago. And it's a brand-new house. And we just thought we'd put a small in-ground pool in.
The house was just built?
Um, March of 18. So we've... Yeah, so we were just here over a year and a half. It's also, it's on a dead end. So when you look at our front door, we have Conservation Land, and then Conservation Land. And we only have one neighbor, right next to us, and then there's one more. One more neighbor.
Just looking for all the papers that they give us to try to find the one we need. Found it. So you want to put this in the back corner of the house?
Yes, that's the largest part of the lot.
What is abutting you on that side? Is that the conservation stuff?
No, our neighbor.
So you have the neighbor there?
Yes, we actually have a letter from the neighbor, too.
It's in there.
They're okay with it.
So we sat down and showed them the plan.
They're okay with it?
Yes, yeah.
Where does their house sit in relationship to your property? Are they about, what are you, 17 feet from your property line? Are they about 17 feet from the property line?
Same.
Yeah, we have it.
You said it's a new house?
Yeah, it's three new houses.
They're all the same?
They're all the same. Same builder, everything's the same.
So they're probably on the property...
We have this here, I can show you.
Oh, they have?
Uh, we probably have that in our packet.
So the wetlands are behind the house and to the right of the house?
Yes.
So you have a neighbor to the left, wetlands in the back, wetlands to the right?
Well, wetlands to the right. There's like a gully. There's like, from our lot, and there's open space and then a gully. And then it starts the neighbor from Foster, their backyard. I don't... It's... I don't know if you'd say it's wetlands, but definitely to the right of us is wetlands.
And so what's not wetlands?
Out back is the open space they had to leave when they built the...
There's old trees out there in like a ditch.
Is that behind you?
Behind us, yes. And then, once you go through the, you know, the ditch or around, then there's our neighbor's yard starts. And if you go through there, their address is on Foster Road.
Well, you got, behind you, you have a 50-foot no-build zone. That's behind your property.
Right.
And then you have a 100-foot wetland buffer zone.
On the right side of the house, yeah.
Well, I'm looking in the back, the backside of the property. You're not encroaching on it in any way.
No.
But your gully that you're talking about is probably that no-build zone.
Right, that's probably, I guess, the open space.
On the other side of your house, you got the 25-foot do-not-disturb zone. It's a tight lot. Very tight lot. Is the pool you install, is the pool you're installing a regular oval, or is it...
It's like a kidney-shaped, almost.
Okay. I was gonna say.
They designed it like around the corner of the house, because that's the only spot we could really fit it in.
Right.
Just for my own brain, that pool on the right-hand side, same position, but on the right-hand side, that's not bigger on that side?
No.
Uh, there might actually be a little more space, but there's a propane tank.
Okay.
That, uh, all three houses are heated with propane.
So we have the pool that's like the biggest part of our lot.
Right in that area?
Down up in that corner, yes.
Who is, um, your neighbor? Your abutter, the one that sent the letter?
Um, John and Michelle wrote.
Okay, I have it.
Technology's great, we're looking at Google Earth.
It's gotta be this one.
Mm-hmm. They just need some power from each other. Nope, we need 10. We need 10 here from the principal residence. They don't have it, it's only 7 or something. 7 from the principal dwelling. We need 10. We're looking for... Give or take 4 there.
5.
A 5.2?
48, something like that. I think it's 5.2, yeah.
5 is that. And then this, according to the commissioner, is 7 feet. We need 3 there.
I don't have any more questions.
Any more questions?
I do not.
All right, being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. Anyone would like to speak? Seeing no one. Is there anything else you'd like to add? No? No more questions, board members?
No.
No.
If somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing for Mary E. Cosgrove for a variance from Section 4143 of the zoning bylaws.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Of the Tuxbury...
Close both parts of the hearing.
I just did. Oh, great.
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made, and seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
No. I don't have any.
If you'd like to make a motion now, cross out the way of reach, cross out that Starbird Ave. Just read a red one about that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance for Mary E. Cosgrove from Section 4143 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to install a 15 by 30 in-ground pool, as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 16 Starbird Ave., assesses map 58, Lot 180, zoned residential.
A second.
Hold on one second, before you second it. Hold on. The... The denial letter from the building commissioner?
Yeah.
The denial letter. If we read the second paragraph, they need 4143.
10 from the principal building, and that leaves 10 from the side of our lot.
It's actually 4143.
They're all 4143.
4143 is not right.
It's 10. 10 feet.
All right, that's 1. What we need... I lost a lot. The proposed pool, approximately 6 foot 2 from side, blah, blah, blah. Tuxbury's allowed 10 feet side-reared dwelling setback.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, it's 10 feet from the principal building, at least 10 feet from any side of real line.
That's a good one. I don't think we've ever used that one.
4143?
Yeah. Use the table of dimensional requirements.
No, we've used 4143 before. I know, I have, since I've been here.
All right, so motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set?
Approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Welcome to the town.
The dimensions as well, I know, we've used them both already. Table of dimensions requests? God, I'm getting good at this.
You are getting good at this.
I just opened another letter.
I think they needed more.
That's all they wrote.
What do you think they needed?
Well, 4143... 4143 is for an accessory structure, accessory building.
Or structure.
And that talks more about being away from the principal building. That's what they asked for, that's what they got. All right, next item on the agenda. If I can find my agenda. Next item is 71 Newberry Street Properties LLC on behalf of Y C Tuxbury LLC for a variance under Section 5291 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to install an electronic message center sign billboard, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1900 Andover Street, assesses map 67, Lot 2, zoned office research. Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Jamie Cutlass, I'm the attorney for Mr. Monica on Newberry Street. My office is 1147 Main, and I live at 84 Quill Run. So Mr. David Monica.
Dave Monica, 223 Pearton Road, Swanscombe, Massachusetts.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, what are we doing?
Well, we, um... Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we know in October the town approved whole extensive regulations to allow electronic message centers, centers, signed billboards in the town of Tuxbury. And we intend to apply with the Board of Selectment and the grant authority, therefore a permit to construct one at 1900 Andover Street, which is Route 133 Longhorns, as you probably know. And I met before we started with Mr. Sadwick, and he suggested we needed a variance from the Board of Appeals because late in the town meeting, the regulations were amended that no electronic sign could be within 1,000 feet of a residential district. And in this case, it is. It's not in Tuxbury, but it's in Andover. There's basically a house that's... The house is outside the 1,000-foot radius, but the edge of the line is about 900 feet from where we intend to put this billboard. So we didn't need a variance. I'm not sure.
Where's the house?
House is in Andover.
Where?
On 133, first, there's the Extended Stay Motel, then a Hess gas station. And to the... Then there's about 150 wood buffer with trees, and then there's a house right there. It's, uh, I think it's called...
There is a house right there?
There is, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, and it's, um, unfortunately, it's... The house itself is outside of the zone, but the edge of the yard is within the zone. And there are a couple of residential, big residential parcels, I think, on the other side of 495 that are undeveloped and either... I'm not 100% sure, but either high-powered lines or landlocked, and I don't believe they could, they haven't been developed in 50 years, so...
How high is the sign gonna be?
Sign, approximately 100 to 110 feet.
And trying to catch the highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's right off, it's 26... It has to be no closer than 25, and it's 26 feet away. It's in the top corner of where Longhorns is, so it doesn't interfere with the business. And they signed off, and they're in favor of it, too, and everything like that.
Top corner if I'm, if I'm standing on 133 facing the building?
To the right side. The, yeah, the entry is on the left, because the triangular piece, the entry, the driveway's on the left. Most of the parking is to the left, goes all the way to the back, so the last two parking spots, it would be right there. And, and right against the fence, almost, where the property line is before the fence and the right away from the highway. And right to the right of it is Extended Stay Hotel, is right there. Fairly close, but not, not close enough, would it impede?
So you're putting it away from the highway? You're putting it on the further side of your property away from the highway?
Right, but it has to be... We couldn't be any closer to the highway than we are. They said we had, in the regulations, it said we have to be at least 25 feet from the highway right away. So where it's located, it's 26 feet from the highway right away. So that's as close as we could get it to the highway.
Just, just so that I completely understand, on your diagram here that you had in your application?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's not as clear.
There's a location for the sign?
Yes.
With a pin mark down to the corner?
Yes.
That's not on 133, that's in the back end of the parking lot, correct?
Correct, correct.
So essentially, from 133?
Yes.
Tuxbury residents potentially wouldn't even see the sign from 133.
Correct, right.
Is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, we want to service, the sign is intended for 495, so we have it as far away from 133 as we can.
The reason for the ZBAs, as Jamie was saying, is at the end of... Or in the middle of the voting of the town meeting, there was a number of 1,000 feet arbitrary thrown out, without the understanding of anybody in the, you know, the town governance. Basically, the state doesn't put anything on there because of... A residential area could be many things. It could be train tracks in some cases. There's many signs put on train tracks, but if they're zoned residential, it could be a problem. So the state took that out altogether. And the only rules that the state has, parks, in different, you know, cemeteries, things like that, reservoirs, things that would be affected, you know, children looking and stuff like that, so... This is just a little obstacle that you wouldn't run into anywhere else, but... Because town meeting is, is the way it is, and there was no ability to really understand what the distance was until you found a location. That's what it is, but, you know, they put on the, they put on the highways so people cannot see them.
Those are the rules, and we're gonna go by them, plus, right, whether or not.
The house that's in Andover?
Yes.
The affected house where the, their lot is within that range?
Yeah.
Can, will they be able to see, it's that house right there, right?
Is it even on the picture?
Yeah, it's right on the edge of the line.
Yeah, it is, yeah, right there.
I...
Will they be able to see the sign from the house?
I went by there to look and see, and so it's a nice house, colonial, everything like that, probably 3,100 square feet, but there, from the outside yard, you may be able to, but there's a, probably 50 feet to the tree line, and then the trees are probably 50 feet high. It's a well-developed area for 100 yards. They have no windows on that side of the house, so I don't think you could see it from the inside of the house. If you were sitting in the backyard, it's possible, you know, depending on how far you looked. I mean, because those trees are pretty high, and you'd really have to look up high to see it, but from the interior of the house, you, there are no windows visible, that I don't think you could see it from there.
Familiar with the Holiday Inn sign on the other side of that off-road?
Yes.
How tall is that?
I'd say that must be 100 feet tall, I would think.
You're in the same neighborhood as that one?
You're right, I think so, yeah. I think there are a couple others there, right? Oh, the Holiday Inn is less, there's, um...
It's up on a hill.
Yeah, it's up on a hill, okay. Yeah, that one's high, yeah. And that, that's lit up, too, as well, I believe.
It is. I actually live off that exit.
Oh, you do?
That would be the exit for me to go home.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it probably took me 10 years to even notice that Holiday Inn sign.
Yeah, I, myself, uh...
Way up there.
And I don't even know what you're talking about, I lived down there.
I, I lived off of Fisk myself, until about 10 years ago, and I wouldn't have noticed it either.
Do you...
But I, we think it's good for the, the town could stand to gain close to $1 million over the 20-year period, because they are gonna pay the user fee and everything like that to the town.
In taxes?
No, in just, just a mitigation fee. That's what they call it, mitigation fee. We have an agreement that we've already, that we will submit to the Board of Selectment that the town manager's already looked at and approved, and it'd be basically $50,000 a year for 20 years, and then if the sign continues after that, it would escalate to a higher amount than that.
And there's also public service.
Announcements.
You guys ever see it, click it, and, you know, click it or tick it.
Who manages the sign?
71 Newberry Street Properties.
Yeah, and they have a digital billboard.
Oh, so it's not gonna be, hold on now, it's not gonna be an advertisement for that restaurant? It's a readable billboard?
You know, that's correct.
Right, electronic, it rotates, yeah.
It rotates?
Yeah, well, the message is every like 20, 10 seconds.
Customizable, depending on who's paying you for the marketing.
Exactly, right, right. And the town will have use of it as well, administer, um, community groups and so forth.
The state gives 15 hours a month each side to put public services. There's Amber Alerts that can be typed in instantly, so if the state puts out an incident, or federal puts out an instant Amber Alert, the billboards all can be chained together to put the whatever information, you know, whether it's a car license plate, or a picture of the children, or... And it's effective, it's worked, not, you know, millions of times, but even if it worked once, I mean, I'm sure the parents that it worked for are very happy about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I misunderstood, I, I was thinking more it was an ad, a sign from Home Stop.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah. First time, I think, in the town.
Is this the first sign that 71 Newberry Street Properties has put up?
We have one up in PB at Red's Diner on Route 1.
Any issues? Issues, any issues?
No, you know, we, we tend to keep ours, our applications all on highways. So no issues at all, I mean, communities happy with it. They did put a little too many up in PB, but other than that, no issues at all. And actually, the town has gained quite a bit of revenue from it. You know, they have, they have also, they have Route 1 and Route 95 that run parallel to each other, so they have signs on each one. You know, the, you know, selectmen are pretty happy, and I think the people with the revenues, because it's used for the kids, baseball, and whatnot, this and that.
I think this is the first readable sign we've heard.
James Sullivan and Stacy Sullivan is the owners of that house in question?
Right, I, I didn't really talk to them, I didn't know if it was appropriate or not to do that, so... Well, we did a mail, we did a mailing to the abutters, only 300 feet, though, so it might not have gone to them.
They're on the abutters list?
Oh, then it would go to them, yeah. I think that's, that... They, I'm not sure they own that house, because that house is 1,000 feet away. We were required to do 300 feet. I think Sullivan owns commercial property that they might rent, that's why they're on there.
Anything else, board members?
The hotel, that's like the Extended Stay?
Yes.
They were informed of the sign going out?
Yes, they were, yeah.
I don't have any others.
For now?
I think so, yeah.
Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. Anyone here would like to speak? Seeing none? I don't want to close the hearing yet, but we got, we got right into the neighbor now, and I wanted to see if that gentleman was the neighbor.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to say?
No, I think that's all we have, I mean, I think it does qualify, but...
If there's nothing else, board members, we'll make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
I may, I have another question.
Okay.
So, being on the town line between Tuxbury and Andover, and I think you had said you've gone to a couple of hearings in Andover already? Is that, was that correct?
No, 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 we haven't. We were, we were required to notify Andover, and we did the planning board, but we haven't gone to any hearings, we didn't, not required.
So you've notified the planning board and received something back from them, or did not receive it?
Did not. Certified mail, we notified them. I drop off everything to the Conservation Commission, to the Community Development, and they send everything out. So they sent out certified notices to all the, all the surrounding towns, including Andover. And we didn't get anything back, at all.
The Extended Stay is in Tuxbury, though, right?
Yes.
So the line is between the Extended Stay, the gas station, and the house?
Correct, yeah. We did notify Extended Stay and across the street, a couple of other commercial properties as well. But we're required to get the abutters list right from the town, and then comply with that.
Concerned about that neighbor, aren't you?
I, I'm not concerned with the neighbor, because I don't think it's gonna... The sign's gonna affect the neighbor at all. What I'm concerned with is the town line, and somebody taking issue to it? What, what happens going forward?
What do you mean, the town line?
If this neighbor has an issue with it, does he go to Andover? He or she go to Andover? Or do they go to Tuxbury? Andover's not gonna have any, any... And they're not gonna know anything that we allowed a variance?
But they do.
I would just say on that, with Andover, they've done a lot of development, and I talked with Mr. Sadwick about this in Andover, like especially off of Daskin Road, where they're putting up a huge, I don't know how, what it is, 500,000 square feet, you guys know, but... Even our town manager himself has sent letters, the Board of Selectmen, Brian Dick, they've sent letters to Andover to try to get information about that, to be involved with that, because it's gonna substantially impact us as far as that light is concerned, right there. And they don't even respond to them, just to, I mean, I know what considered...
That's good for you.
Yeah.
That's definitely good for you. That's definitely good for you.
Yeah, I mean, they don't even call us back, and, and, and that's gonna significantly impact us with traffic and, uh, everything like that, and, uh, I just wanted to point that out, that there's a little lack of reciprocity with, with them, but we did notify them, we have to, we'd.
The thing you're gonna look at too, is Andover at any time could approve billboards on, on their side, and, I mean, your, your town meeting was good enough to say, you know, a thousand feet whether it was in Andover or not. Many towns that we go to, you know, when, and pitch this, are concerned with their town. Whatever's in their town, and really not concerned with the other towns. Your, your town was more concerned with everybody, and we sent everything we needed to send out, and nobody's got back to us, but you know, there's been a lot of times that towns, believe it or not, you know, didn't, didn't know what one other town was doing, then there was a fight in the state.
That's what I'm trying to avoid for you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna have that.
Oh, just two, two, two towns are trying to put billboards up at the same time, because the state, there is no buffer, so in, with a billboard, if you put one up a thousand feet away, another one cannot go. It doesn't, there's no town lines right there.
That's a state.
The state law, we have to go to the state as well after this.
And another town, one up here, then there would be a problem in the state, and a lot of the reason that happens is because the towns never really talk, talk to each other, and, uh, but your town does, your town.
Yeah, we have, if, if, this is approved when we go to the selectmen, we do, we have to send out all the same notifications again to all the same abutters, to Andover and everything like that, and we go through the same process.
Send out a bigger one when you go to the state.
State, we have to.
It's a fi, it goes up to five hundred.
Yeah, even more.
So, there's many, many ways to protect people.
If you look at that sign, though, and look at the way it's gonna sit.
I don't even see how else would sit.
This house is almost looking right at the side of it, like the sign's gonna be like that, right, catching the people up and down the highway.
This is like four stories high, three stories, four stories high.
He's a hundred feet high.
It's ten stories high.
He's ten stories high. My, in my mind, the saving grace is this area right here, right next to that house is all trees, it's all swamp. So I, if, if you remember years ago, that area right there used to flood constantly.
Yep.
So this is all like a big swamp.
Hmm, and it's all trees.
It's all trees, so chances are nothing is ever going in there, you can't say never, somebody will come in and do something.
I mean, that gas station's got EPA requirements anyway, so they're never gonna tear that down and make anything else.
Right, so I'm, I'm pretty confident that that, that house isn't even gonna sit. It's gonna be bright over here, it's gonna be bright over here. If I was standing in this, in this hotel, I might not want that room.
Exactly.
Just so you know, to the way these signs are developed with the, um, you know, the LEDs, cause everything sort of goes down, so it doesn't, there's not a lot of glare. They are bright, there's no doubt, but it doesn't carry.
Yeah, you don't wanna be blind in the drivers on the highway.
Exactly, yeah.
You also don't wanna blind the people underneath.
Anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Yes.
Okay, if somebody'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing for, I would just like to make a motion to close both, both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? All right, if somebody'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close. The variance from section fifty-two ninety-one of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to install an electronic message center signed billboard as shown on plans filed with this board s, by seventy-one Newberry Street Properties, and the property is located at nineteen hundred Andover Street, assessors, assessors map sixty-seven, Lot two, zoned office and research.
I'll take it. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
We can just, we can just read that. It's like, just trying to do, and then I got messed up, it, this and this. I saw this as the address, but that's not the address, that's the company name.
All right, any old business? Any new business? I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, you as well. Thank you, thank you. We'll see everyone before Christmas. Our next meeting is December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. We are done, meetings adjourned. Uh, we need a motion for that, so, wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, never adjourned.